Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's gonna look more presidential on camera, Brian.
(laughing).
Uh, Wallop, everybody. We have President Kathy Devlin, Tim Patricus, Walter Topfleff, our assessor, Brian Wissinger, and Mike Marinaccio, our chief financial officer, and we have some guests. We have Jackie Nappo from the Charlie Inquirer. And sir and ma'am, would you like to introduce yourselves?
Joe Patricia Carpe.
Okay, and your address is?
Oh, Nutmeg Drive in Summers.
Okay, and...
David McCaffrey from the American Legion.
Okay. As indicated in our last Board of Selectment meeting, the public will be able to add or make comments at future Board of Selectment meetings on the first meeting of each month, which will be a Thursday. We are committed, as a board, to open and transparent communications. So our first, well, we actually have three people here, so sir, you're prepared to make some comments, and we'll listen.
Okay. Well, you know, we've been living in Summers for about nine years now, off of Shaker Road in Summers Village, and it's gotten to the point where going on Shaker Road is really feeling dangerous to us. We were going down to Main Street one day, and if you're familiar with Shaker Road or how it gets near, how is the big curve?
Right.
There was a tractor-trailer turning right from Main Street, and he was all the way over into our lane, and there's very little time between, as you're coming on the curb to see anything. Luckily, we were able to stop. Now, frankly, I don't think a tractor-trailer on that corner has to make that wide a turn, so I don't know if the guy didn't know what he was doing, or he missed his turn, or what. But even that part, as you go there, when the trucks come by, especially at night, you're lucky that you don't get hit. There is very, very little room in the lane to go by that.
From what I understand, I guess those tractor-trailers are using that as their main...
Oh, um, well, I've been on this board for 20 years, and one of the first things that came up here were people who lived there 20 years ago, also because of the bumps in the road, or the down, that it's dangerous as well. And we tried to get the dispatcher to stop them going down that road, but it's the people who are in business in Enfield when they get up to, what is the name of that?
It's all McDonald's, it's all McDonald's trucks. Martin Brown.
Moody Road.
Moody Road.
And I always thought that that Shaker Road was a, trucks were not requested to use this road.
They, and I really think the problem we had the last time was trying to negotiate with Enfield, because it's half Enfield and half Summers.
Yep.
So if we could do it again, it might be worthy, because it is very dangerous.
This is serious, I mean...
We wanted to do it.
People are going, you know, street, incredibly fast, but I can't believe there hasn't been a fatal accident there. That's how fast they're going.
My wife saw a truck, and you know, just past Nutmeg, where there's an S, you know, there's an S turn there. She saw a truck, tractor-trailer, going so fast that she didn't know how he didn't tip over.
Not how he didn't tip over taking that curve.
Yeah.
He was going so fast. I mean, he must have been going 70 miles an hour.
It's a 35 mile an hour zone, okay? And from Main Street is the hill, and it goes down to where we live, and honest to God, if you went over, the police could make a nice bit of money if they stopped out there.
Why don't we put a sign out there and get some data from it at least?
We could probably set up some sort of speed trap there.
Well, we have that, we have that sign that collects data.
Right.
Yeah, we should do that.
It would be at least worthy to maybe move it over there, give them a heads up, and maybe move it over there, could at least collect the data and see what kind of speed trap this traffic is going on.
Are we permitted to limit access on that road?
We are the traffic authority.
So in other words, we could say no trucks over this road.
So I would think you would take your comments under advisement and then meet further with the police to have a discussion about this matter.
Yeah, and I understand...
I think, I think their comments are valid.
Right.
They, I know people have tried before. I know they have. But really, I think we're lucky there hasn't been a fatal accident yet, and we can, we can see it coming.
It's a maritime...
And you know, not, not to diss makes any difference, but we used to live in Enfield years ago. If those trucks went down to Park Street, there's a straight shot from that all the way over to Moody Road. I mean, straight as an arrow, wide road, and it'd be much easier for the trucks on that road. There's a one-stop sign, one-stop sign.
Right, for St. Rogers.
Yeah, that's all nursery. It's all nursery. So I know Enfield is probably gonna be stubborn about it and everything else, but I think from, from a people standpoint of Summers, and you know, there's 80 houses in our village now, so there's quite a few people over there.
I don't think it matters what that says. I think you can say trucks are requested not to use this road in Summers.
That's what I'm saying.
At that corner, you're in Summers.
Yeah, right.
Or no right turn, trucks, tractor-trailers, no right turn.
Right, but by gross.
Our former police were trying to get that, we don't need an agreement with them.
So, I mean, again, it's something you need to discuss further, obviously.
Okay, we will, we will take that up.
Appreciate it. I just wanted a forum to express my...
No, no, that's, that's the whole purpose of having these citizens come in, because these are things that we had heard in the past, but were perhaps might as well as a pretty form of action.
I'm not making excuses for, because I support what you are requesting. I just know, I know the information why, but I still think we should pursue it again. We were not successful the last time, but if it continues like this, it's something that hasn't gone away, for sure.
And I think with the newer development there that wasn't there 20 years ago, and the size of trucks getting larger, we've got more to consider, so.
I agree with Mike.
Vehicles didn't have navigation systems like they do today.
Yep.
And that's what, it's probably telling a lot of these drivers, we're probably hiding from this area, this is the shortest route, turn, turn here, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for listening to us.
Thanks. Where, please, you came in. Any other comments you'd like to make, sir?
No, just, just your comment. Frankly, I think Summers did a great job on the road. The Shaker Road part of that road is fantastic compared to the Enfield part of it.
Yeah, once you have the town line, you can tell.
You guys, you guys have done a great job on keeping the road up.
Thank you.
No complaints about that.
But at one time, this, when this happened, it was the president of the Board of Education, then Jan, and she couldn't sleep in that house for the amount of, we fixed it.
Well, we knew somebody that just moved down to Shaker Road, and they didn't realize till after they moved in about the trucks, and that they're just, were shocked.
Very, very unhappy.
Again, I'm sure we said all that you said.
Can we get your email address?
You sure can.
For the record?
Sure. It's jcarpe@hotmail.com.
C-A-R-P-E.
C-A-R-P-E.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, and then with spring coming, once you put a bike on the road and the trucks, I think it's even more fun, right?
There's a lot of bikes, a lot of, I didn't bring that up, but there are a lot of people that bicycle on that road.
There are.
It's a, you know, it's a dipsy road.
Well, and I've, I've come from Enfield, headed back towards Summers, and they're turning left.
That's bad.
And I've, you know, you stay back two houses just to make sure you don't lose the front end of your car while they're curving, so.
Again, I'm sure you people are really familiar with it, because I don't think anybody that goes there...
We've had previous complaints, but as Kathy's indicated, we have not been successful. But we have the option to post signs and eliminate truck traffic.
Well, just ask if you can.
Well, like I said before, I think that the police went over there, they could make a few bucks.
Yeah.
We can always use the revenue.
Thank you for listening to us.
Just like such girls.
You can stay, whatever you choose.
Whatever you like.
Well, thank you.
It's, it's thrilling stuff, so you know, you might, you might wanna stick around, buckle your seatbelts.
I'm sure it is, but I appreciate the effort that all of you put in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's very nice of you to say. And also, I appreciate your comments about our Department of Public Works. These guys are, they do yeoman type work, and they don't get a lot of credit.
That road, our part of the road is great.
Right.
That's probably why they go so fast.
David, do you have some comments you wanna make?
Hi, uh, I'm not sure if I was put on the agenda or not.
Well, you're not sure.
Let's go ahead and relax here for me, David.
Uh, David McCaffrey, Commander of the American Legion of Town.
And your address?
Uh, 249 Ninth District Road in Summers.
Okay, David.
Uh, I'm here, I'm here this evening because, as you may recall, a couple of months ago, the Board of Selectment endorsed the Girl Scouts that had a gold award project to have the flag retirement, they were building a flag retirement pit for the Post, and they also built a couple of flag retirement boxes for us, and those boxes have been completed now, and we, and they've been turned over to the Post, and we'd like to have them permanently installed in a couple, in two key places, and we'd like to get the endorsement from the Board of Selectment for, for that to happen. So the two key places that we, we've, we've kind of gone across town and queried folks, and those two key places are, one, here at the Town Hall, and that would be...
In the back?
Actually, in the front, in the front. Here's the Town Hall, the main, the main sidewalk that comes in, and here's the sidewalk and right adjacent to the flag pole, so it would not be obstructing any type of, on the sidewalk, it actually, it'd be a small pad. I spoke with the Public Works folks, they said that they can install a cement pad because it is, they looked at the box, and we felt that it is something that would be stolen if it were not permanently mounted, because it is really a very nice box. It was, it was actually built, you know, for this purpose, and it really is a, it's something that will last, and it's, it looks very sharp, and it would be just immediately adjacent to the flag pole.
Okay.
And then it is clearly marked that it's only for warm flags for retirement. It says it is not for the US Mail. And, and then the other location is at the recycling center.
Oh, recycling, okay.
Because presently, we have basically large copperware containers over there, and over time, they crack, the water gets in there, they, you know, it's pretty messy, and so Public Works has said that they can put the mailbox on some, like slab-type concrete posts, where they can then pick, pick it up with a, like a forklift and move it around if they need to, but basically, it would be between the reception area where they, where you pay your bill and the Lions Club, which is where it's presently...
Oh, yeah.
And basically, it's a garbage can right now that collects the flags.
Is there gonna be some sort of notification on the box that says to...
Yes, it is, it's clearly, it has red, white, and blue all over it, and looks of flags, it says, it says, "US Flag Retirement Drop Box." And, and we have, we have members in the Post that are members of the Flag Brigade that take care of the flags here in town, of course, and we would periodically make sure that those, that flag box is always maintained. This wa, this way, the flags would stay dry, and, and then we can collect them for proper retirement, so.
Okay.
Just like to get that endorsement from the Town.
I move to accept your proposal for the drop, flag drops.
I second that. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, just, I'd be fine with conditional, just to make, just to have Todd endorse it, I think would be appropriate, since his crew's gotta put the slabs together and all that, but I...
We have talked with the EPD, yeah?
Yes, yes.
They've approved that?
They have.
They said that, they said it would be very, very simple to, to set up the insulation and...
The base and the insulation.
Okay, so if, just for point of order, if you could amend your motion to add that as an opportunity to add agenda items, because we can't make a motion on public comments, but if you add it as an agenda item, then we can.
This whole thing?
Just, just that you're, move your motion to an opportunity to add items.
All right, so you don't wanna take it now, then, but...
I did, I did speak with Ms. LaFleur a week ago and asked her to add it as an official agenda item.
She's, she's been out this year, she's been out on top.
Oh, okay, so, so I did actually ask to have it as, that's why I was, I was here, so it was supposed to be an agenda item.
It's not a public comment, is it?
I'm adding a motion, motion to add.
I would, yeah, I would make the motion to add an item to the agenda for this evening, and it would be a request from David McCaffrey for installation of the flag boxes.
Retirement drop box.
Retirement box.
Okay, thanks. Additional discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, can I make the motion? Now, I move to approve the recommendation and request from David McCaffrey for the flag retirement boxes to be installed at the Town Hall and at the transfer station.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I hope your diagram of the boxes is better than that one.
I told you it was exciting. It's very rudimentary, but...
We got the message, Jack.
Uh, the boxes are gorgeous. They really did a top-notch job, and before they go in, we'll probably put it in the hallway here before it goes in permanently. It really is, they did a beautiful job.
Well, since Jackie's here from the J.I., maybe that's a nice little column in the paper. Get some public setting on that.
Fantastic. That'd be wonderful.
Thank you, David.
Thank you so much.
I'm glad you stayed, I'm a leisure, I can support it.
There you go. We're glad you stayed.
Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, David.
We'll see you again sometime.
Yeah, we'll stop any time.
Thanks, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good day.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, oh, the additional items you wanna add?
I might think, yeah, I think so, but I can't remember what it was. Can we do it a little bit?
We, we may wanna add to the, add to the agenda, there's a couple of resignation letters that came in that hand forwarded us by email, I don't know if we've officially accepted those.
Yeah, that's under Boards and Commissions and resignations.
Do we have Boards and Commissions on the agenda?
Yeah.
Perfect, okay. See if they've got something else.
Could I add an item?
I was actually gonna ask about timing for evaluations.
We're in the process, we're starting that, as I mentioned to both of you and to, to Tim, we started that, and we should have our first victims coming up.
I thought we were saying...
We'll start with, we'll start with the directors first. Okay, so we're accumulating the pros and cons and et cetera, so we're gonna start that process in force.
Okay, and can we also, I don't know if we wanna do it at the Board, but I suggest that you, but as First Selectmen, look at the roles and responsibilities that are now being attached to various employees, because sometimes I think it's overwhelming, and I think we, we need to address that.
Yeah, that would be the plan in terms of the performance evaluation.
All right, so do you wanna add that to the meeting today as a topic? Is that what you're saying, or do you wanna just...
No, I just think, I think it's worth it that if, if, if he's doing the evaluations, that he talks to the directors about their jobs, and I know we should make some considerations about maybe just changing things a little bit, and we, we like to hear from him what he finds.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of spreading the workload, okay? There are certain functions here that I think people may be out of a work, but haven't, pretty much haven't played full.
Okay.
Are not focusing on the substantive issues of their job. Some of this may issue can be directed down to their folks, so that's part of that evaluation.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional items?
Yeah. I can add an item?
Sorry, Mike.
It got lost over the holiday, that's why I wanted to add this item. I forgot to even put it on tonight's agenda, but on December 17th, our, our annual report was issued, officially issued, so our comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the CAFR for fiscal 2018, year ended June 30th fiscal '18, was, was issued. It's on file now at 8:00 PM, and it's on our website, and it's available for viewing by the public if they so desire to look at it, so.
When was it approved again?
It was officially issued on December 17th.
December 17th.
And that was a kind of a busy pre-Christmas week, and then we had the Christmas holidays, so I never had a chance to convey that to you.
Okay, thank you.
And what, what time of the report again?
It's the CAFR, it's the comprehensive annual financial report.
And I might add, if Mike and Brian may wanna comment on this, we seem to be called awards every year in terms of our competency in completing this report, which is a credit to both of you.
It was also filed with...
Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, it was also filed with the GFLOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, seeking its report.
And I didn't wanna make a public comment about that, we're a public for transparency, that includes any of the financial aspects, and again, I encourage people viewing this livestream tonight to go on their website and take a look at it.
Yeah, it's a clean, clean audit, clean opinion.
Right.
So...
Independent, by the way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any additional comments? Okay, authorization, signed a reevaluation contract, either Mike or Brian can comment on it.
I think we're all on that one. Sorry, Walter. So we're, so we're scheduled for an October 1st, 2020, revaluation, and because Summers delayed the last revaluation by a year, by a year, so now we're on a different schedule. And there's, 2020's a big year for a lot of towns are going for revaluation, so we got out there early and sought bids, and I have a bid for $99,000. The last time we did revaluation, it was 157, plus we delayed it, so it was another 22. So although the contract's not written yet, we do have our place in line, we've got the people from Vision that we want to work on the job, we've got excellent pricing, I would just like authorization to, from the Board of Selectmen to authorize, but to sign the contract when it's completed.
Vision, we've used that organization in the past.
Yes, correct. We use it for providing stock.
All right, so why has the price reduced? Does it do the competition, or... I think it's the way they do the job now.
Right, so we, we trimmed off some things that don't need to be accomplished out of the contract to help lower the cost to the townspeople, and by getting out early, we got, we got favorable pricing, because we've locked ourselves in early before everybody else. Normally, for 2020, they would be out March, April, May with an RFP to seek the services. We beat everybody.
Are we gonna make an announcement on the website about this forthcoming reevaluation?
Was that to...
We, we will, once, once we get, when we start the project, there'll be an announcement on the website, which will start like late summer of 19.
At the last, at the last meeting, Mike reported to us that it should be, that he asked for a waiver, and that we approved that, and that it's a data revaluation, only entrance to properties won't be necessary, so that's probably part of the savings too, but it's...
It is. It's a big savings.
Under the low number that you had estimated, so.
Yeah.
It's pretty consistent.
So you're, you're requesting from us to approve the con, approve your authorize, you guys sign it.
Your personal agreement to sign the contract when it becomes available.
Right, and, and you know, we're in the process of finishing our grant list right now, so the, the priority is that, and then when the grant list gets done, we will work to get the contract in place, but we've already secured our place in line.
Okay.
And the pricing.
So I still move.
So motion by Devlin to authorize an order to execute a completed contract with Vision Solutions once the, what are you working on?
Once the contract...
The grant list is completed, yes, at the end of the month.
Grant list and the contract.
Right. Okay, second additional discussion?
Second by me.
Okay. Any additional discussion?
It's a lot less than it used to be, it's really nice to see that.
Almost half.
I remember, we used to, it's about half, isn't it?
Yeah, it's almost half.
Because I recall when we would have to meter it out over three years in order to make the payments.
Four, the last time we did it over four years.
Over four?
Yeah, we did it over four years to make the payments.
Are there, is there personal inspection in homes, or is this gonna be a drive-by?
No, and, and here's why. As long as I'm in tenure here as the assessor, we will never pay enough for personal inspections again. We'll do what's called a data mailer. We'll mail out property information to each household and ask them to send it back if there's anything that's wrong with it, with their information. Now, the reason for this is because we're, we're on MLS, we're, we're looking at the internet, we're keeping up with the permits, so our data on the properties is pretty good. And every time that you pay somebody to go and...
Cost money.
Costs money, it costs money, but then they have to keystroke that stuff, that data in there, and every time they keystroke, the, I've got a 50/50 shot whether they're gonna key it right, and so I'm creating as many errors as I'm fixing, and if we can lower the number of keystrokes from an outside source, we've got a better shot at having good data, which will ensure that we have a good revaluation.
I think another thing I always experienced was lots of people never let them in.
That's true, and that's becoming more of a problem over time.
Get off my land.
Well, you know, people are just weary of strangers going into their home.
Yeah.
You know, so, and, you know, the, the way we're keeping track of data, you know, through different sources, we've got a pretty good handle on what our data is for our properties.
You guys are doing a lot of inspections yourselves.
That's right, we are.
You're out on properties a lot more than in the past, so...
That's a power to make, and I wanted to compliment you also publicly, Walter, for that defined data that we've been able to use as a basis for...
I, I second that.
So in the future, with the revaluations, because we're gonna follow this model every five years, we shouldn't, we should always have some pretty good pricing going forward, which, you know, you know, our job is to do it as efficiently as we can, you know, to maximize our tax.
And the grant list is growing somewhat?
I don't know about that.
Too early to tell. How's that? Too early to tell?
We're hoping.
We're hoping, we'll see.
Too early to tell.
Got a month.
Don't you have to know in February, though?
End of January.
End of January.
I will sign it by January 31st, so yes, we will nail that then, but we're knee-deep in all of it right now, so no finals on anything yet.
Just one more issue with the assessor, I just recall, you recall earlier in 18, 2018, we got a discussion with David Penny about the pilot at Woodcrest.
Yes, Woodcrest, yes.
And we, he requested that we redo it, and that's, that's been taken care of now. It's, the pilot is now $43,108, up from the original pilot of...
Thirty?
Thirty-eight thousand, 318. There had not been a calculation done in over five years on that, so it was normal to see that grow, so it's an increase of $4,790, so about $5,000. They've been informed of that, and they've had discussions with Walter, so everything is...
How often should we revisit that number?
We can do it annually, as long, as soon as he gives me the data.
It's based on the financial, it's based on the financial reports that they give us.
That he hadn't submitted that on a timely basis in the past.
Well, now, now that we've got it...
We just stay on them, and we'll...
Well, that's it. Now that we've got it, you know, we'll just be diligent about it, make that up.
The only other outstanding issue with them was that they weren't really, because they're on a pilot, they weren't really subject to the supplemental tax increase, and I had told Mr. Penny that they'd be entitled to a refund of that amount which they paid, and that's $1,400, so, but he'll either request a refund of that amount, which we will then forward him the money, or he can request that that amount be applied toward his pilot in the upcoming year, so. We haven't communicated yet, but I know he's gonna be calling me about it, so.
Any additional discussion? Okay.
Can I take a vote?
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Walter. Thanks, Walter.
Thank you, Walter.
Now, we'll go into some of the, uh, interesting stuff, the budget.
Oh, yeah.
And before your Mike and Brian make their comments, y'all have a packet there. We stress the fact these are strictly preliminary numbers, okay? It's a work in process. We've had individual meetings with, uh, Department of Public Works, with the fire department, and the police department. The big ticket items, so to speak, in terms of the budget. And, uh, I think we have some rough numbers, so without further ado, Brian, Michael, let's begin with that.
Um, so the, the first one, the expenditure general fund, that's current year. Um, Kathy, you had requested to see kinda where year-to-date stood, um, for cor- for current year. Um, everybody has been trending really well. Um, we're running about forty-five percent, um, of our budget halfway through the year, which is good. That number can be a little skewed because we pay the state police bill at the end of the year.
That's true.
But, all things considered, there's nothing crazy going on this year that, um, has caught my attention. I look at this at least on a bi-weekly basis, usually on at least a weekly basis, um.
The numbers you put in, preliminary numbers, Brian, for the police, you know, anticipating an increase in terms of what the state's gonna charge us?
I am, um, so, I mean, if, if, nobody has any questions about that, I know I didn't send it out to you ahead of time. Um, but, uh, you know, current year, we're, we're on track really well. As far as the budget for fiscal twenty, um, I sent you guys a, a summarized version.
Yeah.
Um, to look at, and then I've included, um, as well, um, the ten-page line item detail that makes up that summary. Um, the big ones that you'll, that you will notice, um, fire protection is going up. Um, that is strictly, um, salaries with the ALS come, system, starting July one. It's, um, it's, it's bodies, is really all that comes down to. Police department is also going up, um, that's estimating a, um, three percent increase on state police. We normally don't know what the final number is gonna be on state police until August, and the budget'll be already in, um, going forward by then, so we make our best guess effort, year after year, and so far, we haven't been, uh, wrong. Um, those are the two, like, increase increases. Um, Public Works, um, has an increase, that's, um. Pretty much the transfer station, those guys, and, you know, the, the townspeople approved that, and so, in this year, it's just. It, it looks like an increase because that was capturing a portion of the year when that happened, and now it's capturing a whole year.
Why wouldn't the budget, so the, the five nineteen budget number, the town, is that under town facilities or under some other line item?
It's under Public Works.
Public Works, the seven twenty-two number.
Yep.
So, does that include the additional money that was appropriated at the town meeting, the seven twenty-two number, or is that the number that was budgeted?
The seven twenty-two does include that.
Okay.
A portion of it, now, the, the salary portion was only about fifteen thousand of it.
If we were to go look at the twenty eighteen budget, as of June thirty, if it was less than that seven twenty-two, yes.
That was approved, yes. It's different, it's less than that seven twenty-two, yes.
Thanks. I wanted to make sure that we were, um, comparing apples to apples.
Yep, absolutely. Um. Other than that, I mean, I, I'm open if you guys have any questions.
Uh, the Board of Education.
Board of Education is a plug number, um, based on, um, just a two-and-a-half percent kind of, you know, guesstimate. We won't know, um, the superintendent is presenting on January fourteenth, and I'm meeting with him on the fifteenth to get his budget, and at that time, I'll plug that number in and see where we stand.
Was it last year, the increase, I can't recall?
Last year, I think they started at two point two, and they finished at one something.
One nine?
I was gonna say one eight or one nine, so we're around there when it, when it was all said and done. Um.
But it, it's kinda like, um, it's gonna be like a, uh, repress, repressed, and, um, because so, so many things were cut last year, it is gonna be kind of like, things are gonna cut loose this year, I'm sure, in, in certain areas. They're gonna want more money.
Not to mention, I mean, last year, they also, by changing healthcare coverage, they were able to save a lot of money, but this year, that you're gonna see that premium go up.
Yeah, I, I.
I think it's capped at a ten percent increase, but.
I wanna elaborate on that point. Our current budget for the town is what it was three years ago.
Yeah.
So now we're taking a look at the, the fiscal twenty, uh, twenty twenty budget with a lower number. As Mike indicates, there, but there will be some increases.
Oh, yeah.
There will be, and we have no idea where our revenue picture will be at this point, so.
What, uh, what's the largest number impacting the Board of Selectmen, is that the re-bow that we just talked about?
Uh, no, Board of Selectmen, um, let's see.
First, first line, cause it's five sixty-eight to six seventy-seven.
So forty, I increased separation payout by forty thousand because, um, with it starting, and if you look at the, the very backpack, it, it's got all the line items.
Oh, thanks.
Um, at forty thousand, um, we've got one, two, we got three people at Public Works that are eligible for retirement any day they want.
Any better plan for it in your budget?
You've got two, you've got two in town hall that are eligible for retirement at any time, and so by leaving ourselves at forty thousand in there, I mean, just the sick time payout alone for any one of those people could be fifty, sixty thousand dollars, so. I, it's prudent to increase that, um, eighty's probably not even enough, but it's a good start. Um, and then the, um, insurance, um, what, uh, LAP insurance, um, has got a slight increase, um, over last year, um, just based on the contract that we have with Karma. It's, uh, it goes up slightly every year, but, but never much.
And town hall salaries over three years from zero to ninety-two to a hundred and forty-two, where's that number coming from?
That number is what we use for, um, salary increases, so when you see zero two years ago, um.
There were no increases.
No, no, in, the, the actuals are the actual expenses, and there were no expenses to that line item. Um, it's used to, um, disperse out to other line items for salary increases.
To address your comment, Tim, we've spent a lot of time looking at comparable salaries for current positions here in town versus other towns of select size, so we make certain we're not overpaying or underpaying. So we're pretty justus about that.
That's not any increase in, um, personnel, though?
No.
Not with the exception of the ALS.
Yeah, and that's in, that's in fires budget, that's not in there, right.
We're not anticipating any.
It strikes me as a large increase from ninety-two to one forty-two.
And it's, again, it's just a starter, um, yeah, we're, I'm sure that number is going to change quite a bit. Um, it's, it's just a starter number. Um, as we go through and kinda see where, you know, we just finished up our, uh, salary survey, so as we see where, think, some positions that were a lot lower than they probably, you know, compared to, versus, you know, positions that are in line, where we, you know, kind of what we actually should be paying.
I guess, I guess what I'd like to see at some point in the next couple weeks is, is maybe a, a payroll number that this is impacting. It's, you know, I'm, I'm looking at one line item that's probably spread across, you know, a dozen departments.
Oh, easily a dozen, yeah.
So I, I guess if I could see a payroll number.
Yep.
And, and, you know, I, I understand the payroll salaries, but, or the, the salary leveling with, with comparables, but are towns different than a lot of towns?
Oh, absolutely.
And, once you give a dollar out in a salary line, it never, ever, 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 ever goes away, it seems. So I just wanna be careful about what we do here, given the state, the state is gonna be handing us, so.
Yep.
I'd just like a little bit more info on that one.
That's the reason we have started this analysis, because that was my concern also. We wanna retain good people, we wanna make certain they're adequately, and better be compensated, but not overly compensated. We have certain functions here versus other functions in other towns that perhaps are more detailed, those are the kinda things we're looking at.
Along, along the lines of what Tim is asking for, if you could come up with that total number, um, and then reconcile it with each one of the departments.
That's good, that would be really good.
On the same page. So if you show you the total salary, then you show it all by department, and then by the selectmen and everything, just reconcile that number.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Brian, where are the, um, I see senior services, I see.
What page are you on?
Page nine.
I'm, I'm actually.
Senior Services? Yep.
I don't see, I, I don't understand the salary picture then.
So, all senior service salaries are in, are on the previous pays, they're under human service salaries. So everyone that works in that department, um, is all in that one line item. Except for the bus drivers, they have their own line item in the transportation section.
No, is that survey similar in this category, or is this another position?
Um, looking right here. So it's this line item here, and it does have an added position, um, for a youth services personnel. Um.
Yeah, that's.
The, it, um, it was requested, so it was, it was put in. Um, the desire is to get a youth services person into, uh, human services. Um, Deanna stated that she was, you know, she's a little overwhelmed between her job and youth, and, um, Summers Comes Together, and everything that goes along with that, with the, um, local, which is the L, L C P grant, local.
Yeah.
L C P, yep.
I forget what.
No, this is different, this is, um.
I can't remember what it stands for. I wanna say crime prevention, but I know that's not it.
It's something, it is something with, uh, some kind of prevention, but it's, um, it's, it's grants that come in from the state for programs like Summers Comes Together.
You know, do drug box collections.
I think that's something that you should also talk about during, um, evaluation.
But, um, so that's, that position is in there, that position was at, hold on, let me.
Twenty thousand.
Let me pull it up real quick. I think it was a little less, I wanna say it was fourteen.
Really? Cause I'm looking.
It's a part-time employee, um, so it's fifteen hours a week at nineteen dollars an hour. Um, total salary of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Yeah, okay. I'm gonna put that right here.
Now, you mentioned to me, Brian, when we were talking, that, um, you're moving their vehicle maintenance under.
Under Todd.
Todd.
So it's in the thirty, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh, it's in the thirty eighteen section under equipment maintenance. So you'll see current year, it was ninety-seven, nine sixty-five, and the proposal is now a hundred thousand even.
Where is it, thirty what?
The thirty eighteen, so it's the first line item under thirty eighteen.
Yep.
Um, the equipment maintenance.
And that's for all vehicles, not just the senior?
Right, so that's, well, that's everything at Public Works and the senior center.
So.
Um, police and fire still maintaining theirs, they've done a good job of keeping up with their vehicle maintenance properly. Um, they don't have any issues as far as they don't, you know, they feel that they're competent enough, and I feel they're competent enough to handle their vehicle maintenance. Um, so we didn't move them all over there. Um, but Deanna met with Todd, and they discussed it between the two of them, and I, they emailed me and said, you know, we'd like to do this, and.
So the, the fifty-one thirty-five category is going from three thousand down to zero. I'm presuming that three thousand has found its way over to.
To Todd's budget, yep.
Is there a chance that we lose sight of the expense of maintaining vehicles for seniors? In other words, I guess here's my question.
Todd will have all the records to be able to sort it out.
Right, so if he's got all the records, can we just leave it in senior services? So we've got a one-point picture of what it's costing us in that area, even though Todd's doing the work?
We could, um, yeah, it would, you know, they could code it to, to whatever code we wanted to do it, but yeah, we can do it that way.
Because then you know what the total costs are, it's not, and it's not DPW.
Yeah.
You know, so it'd be better if it could be separated, and I agree.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to leave it there, because I would like to, I would like to get a study from Deanna. Uh, when we looked at the bus grant last year.
Yep.
She had indicated that they were, they would be, uh, keeping records on ridership, and I'd like to take a look at a ridership study.
She emailed me over some stuff, um.
Like, see if we can't get some efficiencies, cause, uh, my perception is that that bus, when it's used, is lightly used, there's either one or zero passengers, and I'm just thinking there might be a better way for us to serve, serve the population that needs it, but not necessarily spend so much per, per person mile or have a, so.
I don't know if I saved it in this folder, if it's just in my email, but she did email me over some, some statistics that she uses for the grant. Um, I'll forward those over to you guys.
That'd be great, thanks.
Thank you.
Good start, though.
So, uh, what's your gentleman's opinion about what's gonna happen at the state, I guess nobody knows, but, uh, nobody knows in terms of, uh, funding grants.
And come February, we'll have a little bit better idea.
My, you know, I, I think the process will run smoother than it ran in the past.
Yep.
Because there's a party majority here, which will align itself most likely with the, with the governor, uh, whereas you had evenly split, um, before, and so there was gridlock, um. So, I'm sure there'll be a Republican voice, however, I'm not so sure they're gonna get, um, the table or get as much as they want done. So we'll see, I mean, I, I don't know, you know, I don't know, Mo, uh, Roy, uh.
Lamont, that one out.
Lamont has not given any indication as to what he's trying to do. Obviously, his, his budget will be coming out in February, so we'll have an idea then what our preliminary grants will be. Um, and it'll all be predicated on his assumptions, uh, which will be, I'm sure, a revenue package, and, uh, expenditure, expenditure control, whatever. Uh, and will municipally be spared, or will it take a, a further hit? Is, is the question. I have not heard any hint, in fact, I fired off a memo today to, uh, a budget guy at CCM, and he didn't get back to me yet, but I'm asking him what he's hearing as to whether there's going to be a level funding or cutting or whatever, and so.
They have a significant surplus, but I guess Lamont is saying he's not gonna touch that.
There'll be a lot of objections to, to using some of that surplus, uh, to balance the budget, but then again, um, it's probably not totally avoidable, that they might use a portion of it, and then that becomes a point of negotiation, and who knows where that leads, so. I'm, as a CFO at this time, I'm, I'm hoping for level funding, uh, to be honest with you, without further cuts.
Right.
Um, I, I think we could probably weather that kind of a storm. Um, I'm not so sure what, um, future, what, what increases would, would do to us, so, or, excuse me, decreases.
Yeah, the numbers don't lie, it looks like tolls will be a factor here too, I think, right?
Um, let me ask, um, a question relative to budget planning, or we're going about it based on this discussion. I get, I get the feeling that you've already done an awful lot of the pre-work with, like, Department of Public Works and all, and then you'll share it with us, so that we.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and if you guys, and if you guys want to have Public Works come in and talk about their budget, or, you know, anyone come in and talk about, they, they're open to coming in, but I figured rather than starting the process from, at zero in January and saying, sitting here and having a meeting after meeting to get, you know, the tax collector's budget that, you know, that didn't change this year, then it, this is much more efficient, now we have a document, we know, and we can look at this and say, these are the ones that are increasing, and we'd like some explanation on it.
Yeah, the whole point here was not to exclude anybody, the whole point was to define and make the pro- process more effective.
Make it, make it much more efficient.
Correct.
Just so, I, I'm looking at it from the perspective of my trying to get every little detail, it's the idea that as we go forward for the entire budget process, most important thing is that I can take notes and be self-informed.
Yep.
And so doing it, if, even if you're telling me what it is, and I have a, um, don't understand it, it's not there.
Yep.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
In every meeting, I mean, this, like I said, this'll change, this'll update, I'll give you guys new copies, they'll all be dated at the bottom, so you can see the, you know, changes as it comes along, and, um, you know, I think Kim ordered binders, we were gonna get, you know, much smaller than those giant four-inch ones, but.
Those are hard to carry around.
Yeah, but then that way you can keep up with these copies and make notes on them and so forth as well, instead of having so much.
That's right, that's very good.
The whole, the whole process of budgeting was tedious and.
Yeah, I still have, I still have the giant binder with all of the detail in it, because that's, you know, what I do, I need the detail to be able to understand some of the things, but, um, so if there's ever detailed questions, I have all the detail a hundred percent.
I, I mean, when we originally started here, I mean, you look at the budget request forms, those, those were manually filled out.
Yep, yeah.
You couldn't even fill them out online, so you would pencil everything in, then you'd have to stroke them all in, 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 in our. And that, I mean, it's just like, the sheets are tedious, and it's because it was based on a process that was developed in a, in a, a different era.
It was a different era.
And, uh, so now we've, we've moved beyond that, and now, now we're getting Excel spreadsheets and Excel, so.
Yeah, the ten years that I've been involved, this is the first budget process, oh, I wasn't stressed, I haven't been stressed, because of the Todd.
Actually, the first one I haven't really been stressed on either, so.
Well, then you're not scratching hard enough.
I know.
Stress time is around the corner.
Yeah, I mean, come March, trust me, it'll be a little different, but, uh, yeah, I've, I've talked to other towns who have the same form of government that we have, and I, you know, I run into, to other, um, finance people around, and this is how they do it. So I figured, you know, rather than, I tell them what we did, and they're like, why do you meet so much, what are you doing? And I go, oh, that's just what they do, and try this, see if it works, I say, hey, you know what, let's give it a shot. If we totally hate the idea this year, hey, we go back, no harm, no foul, but, I mean, already I can tell the difference, and, um, you know, it seems much more efficient to me.
But looking at the preliminary numbers, the total shoot here, I'm assuming we're gonna get proper funding from the state, we're, we're in pretty good shape.
Absolutely.
Right.
Speaking of proper funding from the state, I made this request here. Joe Courtney's group said if we would, we have time yet to fill out the Department of Agriculture request for an ambulance. And I'm hoping that you guys can push to have that done, either with, um, and I know the information came to Tim, I don't know if it went to John or not.
John would be the one then. Department of Agriculture.
I thought John responded to us.
Yeah, the community development program.
Yep.
Okay.
This was different, though, because this came from one of, uh, Joe Courtney's, um, aides, and it was during. And he wanted to, I wanted to follow up, that we were at least looking to see if we could do it. The difference is when, once before, when Bud and I and Lisa Pellegrini went over to Eastern, when Joe Courtney was there, we had a chance to get a Department of Agriculture grant, to get an ambulance. But at that time, there was a sense that they liked to make their ambulances their own way with one company, and they didn't go that way. I, I'd take anything I can get.
Oh, absolutely, seriously, seriously.
It, it, so maybe it doesn't have the right handle on the doors, and then, I don't care, if we can get that ambulance, we need it, I'd like to try.
Oh, absolutely.
So, what, what's the procedure here?
Say, I can reach out to John, but you clearly have the information, I don't know.
I'm, I'm, I can see, I can go back in my, um, emails and find it. It, I sent it on to Tim and to John.
Okay.
And then I sent it to both of you too, in fact, I know I probably did.
So, any additional comments, Mike or Brian? I'm actually going pretty good about that.
I guess I'd like to ask a couple of questions about CIP, where you're standing, what your plan is.
Here, we have a CIP meeting on Thursday.
Not next Thursday, two Thursdays.
Two Thursdays from now. Um, that'll begin the first round of requests, uh, for CIP. I can't speak for the rest of the committee, um, but I think we're going to scrutinize any capital request, uh, very, very hard, uh, this year, um, in light of, again, what potential funding cuts may be, so. Todd, I'm sure, will have his requests, based on his, uh, tenure plan, Fire will have some requests. CIP can be funded, the Fire can be funded through the ambulance fund, uh, so, different combinations, and then there's different projects which are cropping up, that I'm hearing about that aren't vehicle-related, that are security-related, um, and things like that, so, um, but they all need to be on the table, what will be starting in two weeks. So, I think we'll be sending out a communication early next week, um, I would like to, to circulate those requests to the CIP members prior to that meeting.
Give them a chance to read it.
So, they can read it prior to the meeting, and then everyone who's making their request will be at that February meeting. So, they should be, be meeting in February and in March, to set the CIP budget for, uh, the two thousand, uh, twenty.
Yep.
Fiscal year, wow.
As of, I mean, what the number that's in here right now, it's just a plug number.
Yeah, well, it's more than a plug number.
It could go up, it could go down.
It's what we think we, we can sustain as a town in, in that fund, and so by adding in that amount, that, that allows us to operate within a certain budget. Um, I don't want the tail wagging the dog here, I don't want everybody saying, well, we need a million dollars' worth of equipment, therefore, we're gonna fund that.
Right.
I'm going to say, we only have X amount of dollars, and you're gonna agree with me, or, or the Finance Board's gonna agree with me. We have X amount of dollars to spend, let's prioritize and choose what it is we want to spend on. So, within what we can afford.
This two fifty, we budgeted.
That's, that's been three, four years in a row now, I don't think it's changed.
Not very much, though.
Do we have anything in the kitty now?
Coming up.
My, my best estimate right now is, we can close the year, um, around a hundred and forty. So, with the two fifty, we'd be around three ninety, that we would have for funding next year.
More demands than we have.
And, and, so, so let's say, let's say this three ninety is really four hundred, well, we automatically have discretionary dollars, which are allocated to the town and to the board of that, which is a hundred thousand right there, fifty and fifty. So, if there's any emergency during the year, that money can be accessed without having CIP meetings and.
Like a boiler goes or the ceiling falls down again.
So, now, so really, then your budget's down to three hundred thousand, now what can you afford in that three hundred thousand? What we look at, we have leases, and we have a five-year rolling lease, um, portfolio.
Right.
And what's falling off this year, and, uh, and then, so what's that, what's gonna, it's gonna free us up, so we can take on additional. So, there's just a whole bunch of different, uh, analyses that we have to go and look at, so.
What about the LoC funds, have you done anything with those?
Uh, we have not done anything with those, I was speaking about, about that earlier today, I think we're, we're going to be saving them for, rather than, than, rather than any, um, I think we're gonna be using for building improvements, um, rather than roads and parking lots that we used to do.
We got some issues in terms of our.
I would say so, Fire.
So, yeah, and, and in particular, in particular Fire, I would like to use, uh, that, those are quality funds that can be used, um, on, on those kinds of projects, and you just need CIP approval, selectmen has to apply, and then you can get reimbursed, so.
Do you wanna give a brief overview of my, in the bonding situation?
Sure, um, so right now, we are cash flowing out, um, what our bonding, what our requirement will be over the next three years, three to four years. Um, and I actually sent something out this week to, uh, to Todd and to the Superintendent, uh, to have them firm up some numbers for me, uh, because my plan is to go out to, uh, uh, to market, and if low bond anticipation, no, a ban, uh, by the end of March. And I need to get a general idea of what our cash requirement will be, 'cause I don't wanna bond or ban more than I need. So, coming up in this, this fiscal year, crossing over into the next fiscal year, there will be road projects.
Right.
And there will be school projects, and it's spring, summer heavy, uh, in terms of, all this work has to get done. School has to get done, most, for the most part, when the kids aren't there, and the roads have to get done when the weather is, is warmer. So, what's my, what's my requirement, funding, funding requirement gonna be, cash requirement gonna be during that, that period of time? So, I need to get that, those funds in place, and so, once I get their information back and we scrub that, I meet with Bond Council, uh, and find out if they have any questions about what we're going to do, if they approve what we're doing, then I go on to the financial advisor, uh, in March, and then, then then we would, we would have a, a bid, a bid for the bond anticipation note, and then there'll be a closing, just like a house closing, money gets wired into our account. So, sometime within the first quarter, uh, or through April, maybe, uh, we would have the money in the account ready for the, the summer season.
And a lot of these expenditures, anticipated expenditures, some will be offset by grants, et cetera.
That is true, and some of those grants are also reimbursable grants, so you have to kind of front money and then get the money afterward, so. But all this is accounted for separately. Good.
Uh, any additional questions?
Not yet.
Okay, thanks, Mike, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Uh, force and commissions, uh, appointments and resignations, Joe Talasano has, uh, said, been his resignation.
Well, let's make clear it's not Finance Board.
Oh, right, I was gonna say, what?
My heart, my heart just went into my throat.
What, what do you, what do you know that I don't know?
I think it's, uh.
This is a note from Joe Talasano, unfortunately, I'm unable to attend the EPAC meetings due to my complex work schedule. Please accept my resignation from the committee, best of luck to all committee members. So, Todd and I have reached out to Chris Boucher, and he's, I am writing to respectfully request to be added as a member of the Emergency Prepar- Preparatness Advisory Committee. I am excited about the possibility of joining the committee, and serving as a resource and helping the town of Summers in its emergency preparation efforts.
I move to accept, uh, Joe Talasano's, um, request for removal from the, um, EPAC.
With regret?
With regret, definitely.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move to, uh, approve the appointment of Chris Boucher, 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 how do you say?
Boucher.
Boucher.
Boucher, Chris Boucher, sorry, Chris, um, Chris Boucher to, uh, replace Joe Talasano on the EDPAC.
Second.
Uh, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh. We also received a resignation from, uh, Lynn.
Lynn Garvin?
Who, which one? Lynn, Lynn Van Winderden?
Yeah.
Lynn Winderden. And that was on what?
This is from whom?
Here it is here.
Where?
This is from George.
And, and, it's Lynn Van Winderden, right?
Yes, correct.
Is it, um, Board of Appeals, which one would it be?
Zoning Board of Appeals. CBA.
That's what I thought it might be, Zoning Board of Appeals, move to approve, uh, accept resignation of Lynn, Lynn Van Winderden from the, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals with regrets.
Um, how's that name spelled, 'cause I don't have it here.
It is spelled as.
D A N. W I N G E R.
D E N.
D A N?
I think it's D N.
D E N, from Zoning Board of Appeals?
Right, CBA. And I received a note from Ann Logan, while updating the Summers website pages for the CBA, Zoning Board of Appeals. Ralph Williams was listed as a member. After researching both the minutes of February first, two thousand eighteen, it appears that Mr. Williams was never appointed or reappointed, and it's a February first, you don't reference his appointment. Below is the email received concerning an appointment, so we need to.
Reappoint him?
Reappoint him.
Need to reappoint Ralph Williams to the Zoning Board of Appeals, beginning now immediately?
Yes. Twelve.
Until when?
I think it's ten, the T and L should have it to a full level.
He is a full member.
Well, we gotta have the date, and we don't have it, because it's up to Ann, do you have it right here?
There it is here. The appointment of Ralph has of twelve twenty-two, alternate, twelve twenty-two.
So, it's usually, it's an annual.
As an alternate.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, additional discussion? There was also a correction, uh, for the minutes.
We're not to the minute yet.
Well, this is for an appointment.
Okay.
It was appointed as Getman, was appointed as Fettman.
Yeah, it's just a name correction, I got it, yep, thanks.
I think that's pretty much it.
We still have openings, don't we?
We do.
And there would be, would one be on planning, and another be on economic development?
Economic development, Michelle Young decide.
Right.
In October, we have yet to replace her.
And don't we have an opening on planning as well?
Planning is.
Thought we had a, a full-time, not a part-time, not an alternate, but a full-time member, leaded on to them.
Adam Van Winderden.
He's there.
Okay.
But that's not Lynn.
Here's if I can say yes, yeah, so twelve twenty-two, two thousand eighteen.
Is there any way?
We have three vacancies and alternates to, so we have one vacancy for a full-time, um, commission member, and three alternate.
Okay, when will you, I'm, I'm not on the committee, and I don't go to those meetings, but, when, what do you do with the ad hoc? When is the ad hoc committee going to be?
It's interesting you brought that up, as everybody knows, we're in the final stages of, uh, of looking at all the proposals for the mill, we have one more to look at, and that'll be on January the seventeenth. At that point in time, we'll get, uh, the, uh, recommendations from the ad hoc committee, and I would think at some point we need to evaluate, now, we want them to continue.
You want them to continue?
Well, to continue or discontinue, what's your opinion?
Well, no, it's not that so much, but I'm wondering if, if any of the members who are on the ad hoc would want to go on planning for, as an alternate, because it's going to, there's gonna be so much between planning and zoning, and yet they've got that experience having been on ad hoc, that maybe they would also, uh, go on to that side.
We can reach out to them and ask them. But as it stands right now, the ad hoc milk committee is still, uh.
It's, I'm sure it's still functional, but no reason, if they want, if they'd like to do it, they could, to go to them first.
All right, uh, authorization of scheduled payments.
Are these sheets on the back here? Hey, that's what I couldn't read, I had a question on something here.
Mm-hmm.
Before I ask, actually do it, is this a time of year when you pay, like, pensions or something, 'cause I thought?
There's pension payments in there.
Those are pensions.
'Cause they went, they went out today, so they would've been in there.
Okay, and.
They're once a month, so.
Once a month?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then we'll see, all right, and, um, that was it, I guess that was it, okay. Move to approve payments in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do wanna make a comment, uh, these payments are vetted by Mike and Brian, my full confidence in those.
Awesome, I just, when I saw my three-day pension.
Yeah, they're once a month.
The first, the first Thursday of the month.
Okay.
And the last item is, uh, unit approvals.
I do, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December thirteenth with the following corrections. That all reappointments are confirmed for the prior term appointment for each of the named members, that the appointment of Mr. Roberts Junior is to the Board of Assessment Appeals, that the spelling of Mr. Getman's name and the reappointment to WPCA name is corrected, and that the resignation of Mr. Tolasano is, has noted in item eight above, is noted in those minutes.
All right, now, did you motion that?
I did motion that.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And then the other comment I wanna make is wish everybody a happy year.
Well, thank you, you too.
And thank everybody for your contributions.
You too, Jackie.
Thank you. You're welcome. Move to Jerry.
Move to Jerry in second, anybody?
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you.